The following is a conversation with Harun Ali, a community organizer, an active face of student politics at the University of Alberta, and politics in general at the city of Edmonton. We talked about the student union, tuition hikes, Gateway, how to run for city council at the age of seventeen, and much more. It is important to note that this conversation was recorded one day after the initial results of the student union executive election for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five academic year was released. Since then, let's say a lot has happened. Long story short, the chief returning officer at the office of election of the of the student union announced that the president-elect has been disqualified. It would not be possible to give the full perspective of what happened and how the situation is in this intro. But a more thorough and detailed conversation on this matter will be available in the next episode. Until then, you can check out the student union website for more information. Now, dear friends, this is Emre Ali Biglary Podcast, and here is Harun Ali. Okay, you come from the background of an immigrant family from Somalia. How was the process of your family integrating in Canada's culture? How how's how was you integrating to technically dealing with both cultures as a first gen? Canada and Somalia, I'm pretty sure their culture is quite different. Their cultures are quite different. So how was the entire process of that?
Yeah, uh, my dad became the president of the my dad's been the president of the Canadians, uh, the Edmonton Somali, uh, the Somali-Canadian Association of Edmonton for a little while now, I think over like five years for sure. I don't know how long, but he's been a very big advocate for the black community here and for Somali people here too, you know, I mean, whether that be through like the twenty fifteen, like the murders of like several young Somali boys. Again, I think that, uh, what was it called? Uh, by having such a strong advocate of a dad, I was able to learn and pick up on a lot of skills, you know, I mean, I I got involved when I was sixteen. But overall, though, I think that that integration was made a lot easier by my dad's involvement in the community. He was heavily involved, you know, I mean. And so even though I, even though I I was born here in Canada, like I never like yearned for that Somali community because I always had it here in Edmonton. The Edmonton Somali community is a very tight-knit community. Uh, well, let's go. Well, we don't always agree on everything. We are there for one another, and overall, I think that my dad has helped to, there's been several people that have helped to cultivate that, whether that's Dunia Noor, uh, Sharif Haji, uh, or my dad, you know, I mean, there's several, so many more people that I could I could attribute to that, but, uh, yeah.
How did it, how did it affect your perspective on activism, on on politics, on student politics afterwards, so?
Yeah, uh, I, a lot of my stance on policing comes from, uh, what was it called? The idea that our, the way that we have structured police in Canada is is not to be, it's it's not, it's not fair. It's not, it's not that it's not fair. I think that overall, that policing in, we need to look at value for dollar in policing. And I'm saying that I do not see value in dollar, uh, for locking kids up, you know, I mean, if a kid steals a candy bar, you know, I mean, a couple enough times. Are we really gonna lock up a kid? Whether that be that, you know, I mean, even though that is theft, I get that. But I'm saying, what is the restorative factor there? Is the restorative factor there really sending a kid and into that, like, into that, like, life? I don't think so. I don't think, I think that there are a lot of things that the law criminalizes again that stem from poverty, that stem from these equity issues, you know, I mean. I I grew up in public housing, uh, what was it called? In twenty fourteen, my dad, uh, my dad and my mother, they bought their first home in the south side of Edmonton. And like I've seen how the difference in school and quality, whether that be living right next to like, uh, my school being right next to my public housing u- uh, unit, or, uh, compared to, you know, I mean, a more affluent neighborhood. So again, you know, I mean, I think that a lot of things overall, like, uh, influence activism. But I think identity and I think seeing the struggles that my parents went through, you know, I mean, did also influence my economic ideas, you know, I mean, whether that that be through, I I would say emerge, uh, whether that be through, you know, I mean, like a universal basic income where people are able to get the life essentials, you know, I mean, when I ran for city council, I also advocated for public housing. Public housing to be far more accessible for Edmontonians. And I think that a lot of these things and food, you know, I mean, like, I I think it's ridiculous that we lock people up for stealing food and life essentials. I find it absolutely ridiculous, especially in an economy where we have Galen Weston. You know, I mean, jacking prices up every single few days, you know, I mean, it just seems like folks can't catch a break. I don't know if you've been experiencing it, Ali. I mean, I'm here, but, uh, what was it called? It's been tough out there.
Yeah, uh, these days, um, UVA's campus food bank comes handy for a lot of the students, a lot of the students. Okay, you've been, if I'm not mistaken, you have been the councillor of the student union of the University of Alberta for three times?
Two terms.
Two times, okay. And also ran for presidential election, uh, for two times.
Yeah.
How is, how is overall student politics different from actual politics? What are the dynamics there? How is it? How is it, uh, how how different is the frustrating part of that?
I remember when I, uh, ran for president the first time, I remember walking into, uh, oh, I remember walking in.
Yeah, that.
There we go, yeah. I remember walking into the, oh, yeah.
No, bring this one. See, this one. Yeah, exactly.
I remember when I, uh, ran for the, uh, student union, uh, president the first time, I'd come out of the city councillor race. I wanted to run for student union president because I see value in a union. I see value in student unions. However, I think that they vastly, vastly undermine their own capabilities by not, by not effectively mobilizing students. Uh, you know, I mean, whether that be through twenty percent election turnout, you know, I mean, like, if I was the Minister of Advanced Education and I was trying to shove through a bunch of tuition increases and a bunch of students came to my office and said, hey, students elected us and we have a mandate to be here to talk about tuition increases. And I look on the SU website and I see they were elected with twenty percent. I'm gonna ask. I I don't think your issue's with me, folks. I think your issue's with your students. There is a clear distrust with students and the students' union. And there's not been an effort from student union candidates to really address this. So when I ran the first time, I said that, uh, I effectively said the same thing I said the second time in a more refined way, I would say, but the first time around, the general gist was, we're a union, not a business. And I I just remember seeing the amount of, of like cri- criticism that I got from like everyone, like whether like it 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 was just like, it was insane to me. Because I was saying something that, like, again, I did not think was that controversial. I was saying that we just need to do more effective advocacy, and that means too, we also need to redirect our focus. I'm saying that again, are we a corporation? Are we, if we're not a corporation, if we're a union, then we need to invest into union activities. Union activities mean mobilizing the campus. You know, I mean, when we, when the student union president walks into Bill Fannigan's office, he should be able to say, hey, these are how many students voted for me. Your students are paying attention to what you're doing, you know, I mean. Like, we have thirty-five thousand, over thirty-five thousand undergraduate students, you know, I mean. We should be having more than five thousand people voting in our student union elections. I, yeah.
That's, that's actually one of the problems I wanted to touch on. Number one is that a lot, well, the majority of the students enrolled in any post-secondary institution don't care about student politics. They're not involved at all. They're just there to get an education, um, learn something and just leave. And as a result of that, the, the amount of attention that the university's board and the university's governance technically gives to the student union becomes, um, quite different rather than a strong body. And, okay, I wanted to talk to you about your, uh, campaign slogan for the second time. Uh, it's a union, not a business. Even a union, it needs money, so it has to have an influx of money, and that's called a business. So, so how do you, okay, how do you differentiate this, these from each other? Because, like, I have a hard time accepting that slogan, you know?
I I knew a lot of folks had a hard time, and I mean, I'm sure Levi Flaman did too. But, uh, overall, um, here's the thing. It is a union. It is not a business. A union's activities at the core mission need to be mobilization, and I'm saying the way that you do that, again, is through charging people, like, membership dues. We charge students' membership dues, and I'm saying, we do not want, to be frank, I don't know what this is, corporate socialism. We do not, I I don't wanna be subsidizing a failing bar, like, why are, why am, why are our students subsidizing bars on campus that are clearly not financially in a well position? I'm sorry, a lot of students don't wanna go to Dewey's and Rats. Again, I'm advocating for these places to be closed, but I'm saying that if we know this, we need to adjust our budgets to reflect that. And I'm saying that, again, you know, I mean, the other thing here too is that does a student's union need to run these many businesses? And I'm saying, what is the value that students are getting? I think the value, again, I think that students haven't seen a deduction in their student union fees. If anything, actually, they've seen an increase since twenty nineteen with the, uh, I believe with the sustainability and capital fund, uh, fee, which, to be frank, was, in my opinion, the Myo Horace Theater using that money, again, in my opinion, is questionable. I think that
What did they do with the money?
No, no, I I mean, I I think that the my, the sustainability and green, like, uh, and, uh, and capital fund, I think that it was posed to students as a sustainability effort where they were gonna get money for projects and that type of stuff. And again, like, while, like, I, like, they did say that it might be used for capital stuff, it seems like the primary goal has been to use it for capital stuff, and it seems like it was greenwashed.
Could you, could you please specify what you mean by capitalist stuff?
So, no, it was, no, so it's called the Sustainability and Capital Fund.
Okay.
Uh, what was it called? The Sustainability Capital Fund was a pastor referendum, uh, by the students' union. So it's just a fee that students pay into, and it's just like, uh, it's a fee, it's, um, it's a, it's, it's a whole, basically a pool of money that the students' union can draw, there's a Sustainability and, uh, Capital Fund Committee. They give out grants, uh, each semester, I think four times a year. I think one's coming up actually in May, so if anyone's watching. Uh, I don't know how much the amount they give out is, but overall, I'm saying that the most, most of the funds, from my understanding, were used, in my opinion, were used towards the, uh, Myo Horace Theater, uh, project. Uh, and I'm saying that, again, you know, I mean, like, students had rejected this multiple times before, as it had been posed under different, different names. I can't remember them off the top of my head, but if you look through the Gateway, uh, there, there, this is not the first, the Sustainability Capital Fund was not the students' union first attempt at getting students to vote in favor of the, uh, Myo Horace renovation.
I see. Um, another challenge specifically to student politics, let's, let's talk about our situation as student union is that the team is only there for only one year. And, um, in some circumstances, the existing, one of the existing executives either gets re-elected or gets elected as the president, and as a result, they are more familiar with the system, with, um, the network that the student union has across Canada. And the pace of the, the pace of their activities and their advocacy will be increased. However, in most scenarios, that doesn't happen. That doesn't, that's not the case. So there is a period in which you have to get transitioned, and then you have to get introduced to all of these important people, whether it's the Prime Minister of Education or the, 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 the city mayor or something. And all of these take time. And all of these guarantee whether student union will be successful or not in that year. And it's a high poss, it's, it's not high, but there's a possibility that the student union wouldn't be successful, and as a result, the businesses assure the presence of the student union for that year, at least the alternative presence of funds and technically, um, power to advocate for students, whether it has to be a campaign for tuition hikes or any other thing. So I think in the bigger picture, when you think about it, presence of those businesses assured the, the student union's active presence for students in the long term. But I do agree with you that it's capitalizing a lot of money over the short term and not providing a lot of values. Doesn't make sense?
Yeah, uh, my perspective there is, is that I was told that this was a student's union. I was not told that this was a student company, so, I don't wanna, I, I'm sorry, like, again, you know, you mean, I, I want them to do their jobs. I, I, again, you know, I mean, like, again, like, Levi Flaman has been working throughout this year to, uh, optimize Sunini, uh, budget and everything. And I'm sure that, again, we'll see some savings throughout those budgets, because, again, I know that Levi is very, very, uh, well-versed in that. But overall, though, I'm saying that if they're not gonna pass off these cost savings to students, and they're not gonna do, to be, like, tangibly speaking, there was some advocacy done, but I'm saying that there was some massive overlaps this year, and I'm saying that we should not be opening new businesses until we can get back to focus on a union. The reason why we, I went with a union, not a business, was it was supposed to catch people's attention. It was designed, it 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 was designed in that nature because we wanted people to start talking about the fact that this is a union and to debate the fact that this is a business. In my opinion, I don't think it's a business. And again, I think a majority of campus may not agree with me, and to be frank, that's okay. But overall, though, I I I think that, uh, I think that more and more people, again, like, I think it's just about paving the way for new people to continue talking about that, you know, I mean, the same way that Beshear, the same, uh, similar elections have happened before, Beshear, Marina Bannister. You know, I mean, that old and new guard. Sometimes, you know, I mean, people disagree. Sometimes, you know, I mean, things happen, but overall, though, I'm saying that if the students' union wants to be a union, I'm saying that they need to forego some of their business activities in favor of being an actual union. And they need to actually, like, they need to make that separation a lot more clear. The businesses are not the core of the students' union. The businesses support the students' union mission, but overall, though, I I I also don't see the need for us to, you know, I mean, I I think that projects like the Myo Horace, like renovation, you know, I mean, like the theater, again, like, I wonder how much, I wonder how much more, uh, potential that we could have for the students' union if we really just honed in on advocacy. That's what students want. Students don't, students do not feel like the students' union is an effective advocacy body. And I'm saying, as a union, that should be concerning. I I I think that that is absolutely concerning. The other thing here we have to realize is that Danielle Smith and her legislation, uh, Danielle Smith as, uh, United Conservative Party, I am pretty sure that they have passed something about voluntary student unions, uh, in one of their political policies, you know, I mean, so again, like, these situations are being observed. So, you know, I mean, growing student dispatch, this, uh, this, uh, anger towards, uh, towards executives that, to be frank, have maybe lost touch with what students want, coupled with a UCP that's willing to do that may have dire consequences for the students' union. They need to listen to students, and I think that, again, you know, I mean, I think that the election results that we saw last night are a reflection of that anger. You know, I mean, uh, not null racist, not in one race, but, uh, you know, I mean, I think that in other races, you know, I mean, I think in the, especially in the president's race, you know, I mean, that we were seeing, I'm very happy to see that we have a woman, a female president representing the students' union in the next term, but also a candidate that is so unapologetically, that has stood up for human rights, whether that be on Palestine, whether that be for the sexual assault center, you know, I mean, and will continue to fight for students, and I think that we will see a marked difference, whether that be with Abdullah Basri, with Renson, with all, like, I think we, I think they have set up like, uh, an excellent team there. Yeah, I see, I just, uh, who's the vice president? I mentioned four people, right?
Yeah, well, you mentioned VP External, uh, VPSL President, VPA is Leila, and
Ah, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, VP Finance is still Levi, so.
I see, fair, yeah.
Okay, let's, let's go deeper on this student union tangent. You, you had to, uh, presidential, you attended two presidential, yeah, elections, um, which none of them had any success, unfortunately. What the, what, what did this experience, what, what did they teach you? Because I'm pretty sure they have a lot of lessons, and it's, it's, it's a magnificent experience to have, although heartbreaking. You learned a lot of things. So what were the lessons?
I am not an excellent communicator. I am, I am someone that whenever someone throws me a ball, I'll take it, you know, I mean, and I'm pretty quick to swing that bat, you know, I mean, and send it off without really, you know, I mean, sometimes, and that is something I'm working on, like, taking that time to reflect. And I think that first time I ran for president, uh, very clearly reflected that. Both times I ran for president, the platforms, the core of them were very, very similar. It's just the messaging was different, and I think that, like, you know, I mean, like, that continued development has occurred. Uh, and I think that I've seen, like, I, I remember in January of twenty twenty-three, when we started, when I started the Law of Laws, uh, advocacy, I took a lot of lessons I learned from the students' union, you know, I mean, I learned that, uh, ambiguous statements can lead you into trouble. And that making sure that you're clearly, like, uh, what was it called? Making sure that you clearly lay out the facts is incredibly important. And that semantics aren't as important. And then while you can argue semantics, you can argue, uh, what was it called, um, you can argue arbitrary rules, you know, I mean, and things that, to be frank, don't really make sense. No, sorry, uh, you can't argue things that don't make sense, but again, like, my point being that, uh, I, I, I think it taught me to argue in good faith. And I think that, because I remember feeling, uh, seeing the other side of being, uh, you know, I mean, of dealing with things in bad faith, from other, other people dealing with me in bad faith because of rumors, you know, I mean, overall, I think that, uh, it also taught me to, uh, to value myself as a person. Both times I ran, I ran because, again, like, I thought that things were dire. I remember the second time I ran for president, I ran because a lot of those things were very personal to me. The residence part was personal to me because I lived on residence. I paid that fifteen thousand dollars, I think, to stay at Lister, and that did financially hurt me significantly, and I know that hurts a lot of students. But students do deserve to have that experience, you know, I mean, living on campus is an incredible experience, and if you can, I would do encourage you to do it. I made your, I made lifelong friends and, uh, yeah, and I think that, uh, they helped, those lifelong friends, actually, I think they helped me to see that there are other things beyond the students' union, uh, to do in, in the world, and I think that, um, I'm continuing to do that.
Can I, can I ask a personal question? It's, it's hard to have lost the election and go back home at like ten P M. at night, on the, on the night that, that the results are out. You've been on the pinnacle of, let's say, um, your popularity over, let's say, two or three years, because all the campaigning you have done for about two weeks. You have a lot of assignments to do because of all of the campaigning that you did and midterms to do, and you're a student at the end of the day. And as, and all the other problems that people face, and on top of that, you have lost the election, you have so in that emotionally invested. So how was the process of getting over that?
Uh, it was very quick, actually, uh, and the same thing for the city council and the same thing for any election, to be honest. A thing that I think about here is, is that, uh, I like to see progress. I like to think of it as us moving the goalposts forward. So, you know, I mean, whether that's, um, whether that's a point, whether that's, you know, I mean, like, uh, zero point zero one, like, any progress I see, I'm ecstatic about. I think that, you know, I mean, we, we did, I, I believe that I increased the number about I got, uh, the second time around. While not by much, I think that overall, you know, I mean, that I wa, I, I knew that the execution of the ideas was, like, again, like, I don't think I clearly stated to students what exactly I wanted to do. I think, again, I left a lot of things up to ambiguity and to assumptions, and, again, you know, I mean, like, I, I remember the Gateway article, uh, some of the Gateway articles, well, the first time around, saying that when I said that I wanted us to mobilize, and I remember seeing, uh, I don't know who, but someone saying that in the Gateway article that they wish I had mentioned, like, sit-ins, you know, I mean, they wish I had mentioned, like, radical actions, like tuition strikes. These are all things I believe in, and I, as they mention, you know, I mean, and like, I would never be opposed to them, and I think that we should do them. I think that, like, I think what, uh, Akengsha and other executive, uh, not Akengsha, I think, I think it was Marina Bannister, maybe. You know, I mean, going to David Turpin's office, following him after, uh, tuition, after a tuition, uh, town hall, you know, I mean. I really think that we need to show Bill Fannigan that students cannot afford this. Uh, like, you know, I mean, like, as much as, uh, I, I, again, you know, I mean, I've been hearing a lot of different things around the tuition hikes. And I was concerned about those, and that was what I, I wanted to see progress on those topics. I wanted to see tuition not increase. I wanted us to build a cross co, like, uh, across campus coalition of people, not just here, but also across the country as well, you know, I mean, students' unions. To say enough's enough, you know, I mean, like, students are at a breaking point. People are using campus food banks to eat, you know, and people are choosing between textbooks and the cost of living. Like, i- i- it's not fair to students, you know, I mean, and again, especially not to international students. I, I think that, again, you know, I mean, like, I, I, I can't even begin to imagine the the struggles of being an international student at this current moment with a government that continues to demonize them for a housing crisis that they did not cause, while at the same time too, struggling to find housing because the government refuses to build housing. I couldn't imagine the frustration there, you know, I mean, it's like talking out of both sides of your mouth. Yeah, but
You're touching on a lot of points, man. You went through all the things I wanted to ask you. Okay, let's, let's take a step back. Um, my last question about the student union is that after two times running for presidential elections, I'm, I'm sure you've also ran two campaigns for your, for the terms you ran for the council. What's the process of? First, starting to think about a platform because you want to run for a position, let's say, president. So, can you give a, let's, let's, let's give a crash, let's give a crash course for running for the student union president uh, campaign, starting from, um, writing your platform, consulting with student bodies, whether it's res, student representative associations, clubs or higher, uh, lower groups. And overall, the entire process of starting to the end, which is the election night, the, 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 the results night.
Yeah, no, uh, absolutely. Uh, what was it called? So, uh, first thing is you decide to run. You know, I mean, uh, that's a big decision. I remember both, I, the first time around, I was pretty confident about it. I had decided in December I was gonna run. The second time around, I was much more hesitant. I remember being in Calgary, actually, with my friends. We were on a trip on Reading Week. And I was just sitting there thinking about it, you know, I mean, and I was like, I, I knew that the election was gonna be unimposed if I didn't run. And I was like, Harun, I think I'm gonna, you're gonna regret this if you don't, uh, if you don't act, if you don't, uh, if you don't present your ideas again, you know, I mean, and I thought to myself, we had improved the community, I had improved my communication, you know, I mean. And at that point, you know, I mean, that we, I was working on a national campaign to see, uh, what was it called, to see greedflation come to an end in Canada. Uh, and we were seeing success, you know, I mean, I think at the time we had like seventy thousand signatures, you know, I mean, uh, our public battle there had been working, and I was thinking to myself that, okay, let's see. I threw my name in there. Once you throw your name in, though, the second thing that then comes up is the platform and consultations that come there. I wish on the second time around that I had consulted with the ISU. I should have. That was my failure, and I acknowledge that.
Make sure, to make sure it's clear, Indigenous Student Union.
Indigenous Students Union, yeah. Uh, what was it called? Once you're done with that, and once all that's been, uh, once all those consultations are done, the thing here is, is that you're gonna see varying different opinions from across campus, and this is where candidates come in. Is you need to think to yourself, what do you want to see? What is your vision? But also taking into fact the consultations that you have done, the pieces of advice, the, uh, all the words of wisdom and everything that people, student leaders have passed down to you in collaboration with building that platform that represents who you are as a person. The first time in there, I did it a little too much. I represented myself a little too much as a progressive. Uh, again, you know, I mean, and student union elections, you do have to be nonpartisan. So, once that's done, once you have a platform all ready to go, uh, you can start working on social media, graphics, you can put, uh, what was it called? You can also, before doing that campaign platform, you do need to get together a team, pull together some of your friends. And then start on the platform. Once the platform's done, start on the social media strategy. Again, student union elections are getting a lot more creative and, uh, a lot more, uh, again, I think that, uh, minor shout out, I think the five hundred and fifty dollar limit in student union elections, to be frank, is ridiculous. I remember when it should be far higher. I remember when I ran for city council, we spent, I, I, I think almost thirty grand, and we had, I think, over five hundred donors. And we had, I think, over five hundred donors. Uh, you know, I mean, I I'm actually pretty sure we broke the record for the amount of small, one time, uh, small donors that we had for any city council election. Uh, and we we like, we hammered that home, and I remember spending that much money. Uh, to campaign to about sixty thousand constituents, coming to the students union and being told, yeah, five hundred and fifty bucks, bud. I was like, like my hands, like, again, you know, I mean, that five hundred and fifty dollar limit. Only serves current executives who are, have the name recognition, who are able to then, you know, I mean, capitalize off of that. Again, you know, I mean, if you could, like, let's say the limit was a thousand. Honestly, for the presidential ways, I think that the limit should. Even be a bit higher at fifteen hundred. Again, I know that this is coming out of student pockets, but at the students unions pockets. However, you know, I mean, I would recommend that they don't spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in dodgeball next time. And that might not hurt so much.
I love the uh minor um. The criticisms across, across explanation. It's it's nice. I like it. Um. Okay, and then, and then you start your campaigning and. Um, how is the process of, because I'm sure you also need to do, to give class talks. And you also need to manage your life as a student. So how is that?
Uh, both times I ran for president, and I'm sure a lot of candidates can attest to this, my social life, my student life, out the window. Uh, I don't think I went to classes either time. I actually remember the first time, the first time I ran, I think it was only one class. So I don't think it was too, too bad. Uh, I was like, I I was taking a much more relaxed, like I was coming back, I was recovering from that campaign. That camp, that city council campaign was a very long one, so I took some time off from uh school just to focus on myself. And um, yeah, no, I think that that was an excellent decision for me and yeah.
Great. That's, that's lovely. Um, let's talk about city council. At age seventeen, you ran for city council. That's uh. How am I supposed to call it? Okay, the PG thirteen version will be quite ambitious. Okay, what, what was the reason you ran for it? What made you confident? Um, in your decision, in your network of support and in the plans you had?
Uh, I remember eh, I remember sitting at the Remedy Cafe actually in Tullagur. And I remember doing a lot of consultations there and I think it was before the pandemic. I think it was actually. Potentially in twenty nineteen. Actually, it was probably in twenty nineteen, actually. Yeah, it was in twenty nineteen, actually, because of the provincial election. Uh, what was it called? I I was meeting with some folks and I was talking and I was starting to get everything together for the campaign idea. I remember the first platform that we had, you know, I mean, again, uh, it does ref- uh reflect the business community, like, again, you know, I mean, like. You can't take everything, and this is like a lesson even for student union uh can- candidates as well. You can't take everything from consultations and throw it into a platform and make it a, make a wishlist. You do have to add that personal uh characteristic of who you are, what you believe in as a person. Because people deserve to know that, whether that's students, whether that's the general public, they deserve to know what you believe. Not just what the other, well, not just what a bunch of groups believe, but what you as a, as a candidate believe, because that will influence how you react to things. Uh, so yeah, once we put that, uh, once we put that together. We were off and it was, it was an intriguing journey. There are lots of hurdles along the way. Uh, I turned eighteen halfway through. Uh, I remember there were concerns, but if I could register and if I couldn't. Uh, because I was seventeen and I, by by not letting me register, uh, it wouldn't allow, it wouldn't have allowed me to collect donations starting January first. Uh, so we registered, I believe, on January third, uh, January third, twenty twenty one.
That's some very specific paperwork headache, man.
It was, it was, it was a, it was something.
And you said you got about, okay, you you, did you say you had about four, uh, fi- five hundred donations, like sponsors?
Uh, we had, yeah, so we had a lot of individually, we had a lot of small time donors.
Finding all of that circle, like how long that did that take? Because if that's a decision, it has to be made like a, at least a year in advance.
So what I actually did was, I just did something very unconventional. I just went to Twitter and I just started D Ming people. I D M'd my followers, so I just said, hey, you know what? I'm running for city council. Do you think you could chip in five bucks? A lot of people chipped in, you know, I mean, like, uh, I think, like, I think our total spend uh was something like fifty, like. Uh, I mean, like, I think our average, oh, sorry, our average donation, just sorry, I'm just doing some rough, it was twenty seven thousand, I believe. And we had about five hundred, let's say. We, about fifty four dollars. It was a very low, like, total spend compared, uh, I mean, like, uh, average donation per donor. Uh, you know, I mean, we did have some large uh contributors and I'm very, very thankful for them uh for contributing to the campaign. Uh, but, uh, so I'm so sorry, actually, I I did also lose track of your question.
It's okay, don't worry. My question was, how long? Now I lost my question. Uh, my question was how? How much time did you have to do for, how much time did you have to put for planning uh before actually deciding on, like? What was the, what was the time, length of the time that you planned this entire campaign?
Uh, from twenty nineteen, I'd planned it also in twenty twenty a bit. I talked to some people, uh. And in twenty twenty one, I think that's when it really took off. Oh, actually, I remember, see, in twenty twenty, uh, in the beginning, it was in, uh, we met with him, I met with my friend in February, actually. And that's when we started doing consultations, having conversations about what we wanted to include. I remember being just a sixteen year old at the time, I believe.
Twenty twenty?
Uh, yeah, twenty twenty. And this is, uh, this is like, uh, uh, winter twenty twenty, and then we switched online for, uh, what was it called? It was before the pandemic had be, I I think had be, uh, what was it called? I think be, it was before they declared it a public health pandemic. I was like sometime in February, early February, I believe, the first few days. Um, and yeah, so it took a little while. I believe it took a year. Uh, but overall, a lot of things, again, you know, I mean, I think. A lot of the ideas that I have, uh, and a lot of my, like, thoughts come in the moment. Like, a lot of the things I tweet, like, my friend and I will be discussing something, and I'll be thinking about something. And then later on that night, they'll see a tweet, something about, something to do with that, you know, I mean, in an aspect. Um, a lot of what I do is not very calculated. There's this assumption that I'm some very, like, uh, what was it called? Very well organized individual. I am not very, very well organized. I. I am, uh, yeah, I have A D H D, uh, what was it called? As you can see probably by this interview, it is a bit all over the place. I touched on various different topics. So, yeah, and that, and I think that reflected in my campaign and that reflects in my advocacy too, you know, I mean. There are good things and bad things, you know, I mean, the good things are is that I think it brings genuine enthusiasm. I am genuinely enthused, you know, I mean, like, I am genuinely supportive of a. Of a lot of things that I think that, uh, overall, I think that my enthusiasm has stayed, stay, stayed the same high. Even though, you know, I mean, we have had some disappointing wins, uh, whether that be on a provincial level. And the federal polling, how it's looking, uh, next election may be an intriguing one.
It's gonna be fun. At least for you. Who's interested in politics? Um, okay, let's, we talked about. A very crucial role is student journalism on campus. They're, um. One of the oldest, if not the oldest, one of the oldest, um, student, uh, newspapers in Western Canada. How do you think they contribute to campus discourse? And how do you think the effect? Overall, the the flow of. The flow of. Student politics on campus.
Without the gateway, I would be very, very intrigued to see turnout. Uh, I think you would fall substantially, and I think that at ten percent, I think you start losing like an argument. With the government, uh, that, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I, I, I wouldn't run in an election where the turnout was on average ten percent. I think that, again, that's an abysmal mandate from students. I think that, again, that just shows the distrust that students have in the system or a general apathy. It is on the students union to make a case to students that there is a value in their students union. And whether that be through education, whether that be through outreach campaigns, that's why I liked Hakeem Bani's campaign so much this time around. Was we do need to do more outreach as a union, and that was what I said, and that was what I meant too when I said a union, not a business. Is that we just generally speaking need to do more outreach. Uh, but overall, you know, I mean, I think the gateway's role is incredibly valuable. I think they add significant value to campus, and I think that their fee should have passed the last time. I remember running for city council, I commented on it actually, I said that I'm disappointed that their fees uh failed. And I'm very happy, you know, I mean, their fee passed, you know, I mean, to the haters of the gateway, sixty percent, yes!
How do you think they? Because it's a, okay, you are a, a group of students who are responsible to keep a student body, which is. Being student union, uh, accountable. However, you have to go through their channel as the regulating body of of the university, um, of the student manners technically. To get your campaign approved, to get the. Technically, the decision that you want to implement. Um, a program in which students are charged for your services, gateway charging students, I think it's one point five dollars every semester. For each student, for each undergraduate student, if I'm not mistaken, I might be wrong. Um. So, how do you think, because as a result, this group now has to get the approval of the student union in which. Whether they like it or not, gateway has to keep them accountable. So there is a, there is a challenging dynamic between. Fuck. I'm sorry, man.
No, there is a challenging dynamic.
Yeah, I just, I just don't remember the words. Sorry. Can I ask my question again? Sorry, this is, this, this is not me, I swear to God.
Did you hear the no, though? Did you hear the no, though? I'm flying with you, yeah.
Um. Okay, there is a, there is a. There is a challenging dynamic within the gateway as the body of, as the student group that is supposed to keep the student union accountable. And the student union, when gateway is trying to run in the elections as. A group in which is intending to charge the students a price for their services. So. How do you think, as a student leader, um, as a person who has been involved with student politics for a while? How do you think s- um, gateway can manage this relationship? Of still keeping a students union accountable, however, not, um. Uh, in a way, in a manner that does not negatively affect their relationship with the student union as the body who is. Who has the authority over approving Gateways' uh campaign.
In my perspective, I don't think this is really on the gateway. I think that's on the students union to have checks and balances to prevent, um. Uh, like, uh, uh, to prevent situations where. Unfair election habits are done because executives were held accountable. Again, I think that the gateway. I I think that I I'm looking forward to a lot more pieces next year, especially as a gateway is able to hire more staffers. Uh, I think that they've done like an excellent job this year, and I think that, you know, I mean, like a round of applause to Katie and her entire team. I think that they have done phenomenal work there, and I think that they continue to do phenomenal work for students. And while it is a challenging dynamic for them to navigate, I think that they have navigated it excellently and I, uh. And I think that, and I think the executives haven't done anything in that case. I think that I'm pretty sure they also, I think they actually even waived. Uh, the D F U, uh, I think they waived some requirements to make it a little bit more easier. A lot of those requirements in bylaw, I think that, like, I think the bylaw, like, regarding public sites and referendums. Overall, and I also said this to the I S, the Indigenous Students Union, uh, president, uh, last night, I said that I don't think we should be putting these, uh. Basic human rights back up for votes every four years. I think that there's certain fees, and I think that the gateway should also be enshrined there too. I think that campus journalism. Is, I think, is incredibly vastly important, and I'm saying that they cannot do an effective job of holding the students union accountable. The only, the part that the students union holds a gateway accountable is on financial transparency. And I'm saying that I sat on audit committee, I don't think, I I I haven't, I I have, I haven't heard anything. Uh, I'm sure some haters with the gateway might assume that they're hiding things, but I don't think so. But, uh, overall, um. I think that, I think it is, I think that. They've done an excellent job, and I think that they need to just continue what they're doing now to, and I think students are gonna continue to see value in the gateway. But I think that enshrining that in bylaw, I think is an excellent idea, not just for the gateway, but for the landing. For the I S, for the Indigenous Students Union, for the International Student Association as well, because international students do deserve representation on campus. And, you know, I mean, uh, one point seven difference between, like, I I'm pretty sure the I S F actually last night got thirteen point three percent. And they needed to get to fifteen percent. That one point seven, in my opinion. It just hurts and I know, I know that international students did want representation, but again, without knowing the numbers, it makes it so much harder. On what, to be frank, is a lot, international students that are working, again, multiple jobs, that are wearing multiple different hats, you know, I mean, in the community. Uh, that are trying to, like, uh, that are ma- juggling a social life, they're juggling a private life, because let's be honest here. We all don't, I I I can't remember the last time I had a moment to like stop, breathe and relax, you know, I mean, this past week, it's been stress, stress, stress. But I know that a lot of students are feeling that, especially with midterms coming up, so, yeah.
Let's, you brought up international students, so I want to talk to you about. The international student cap that is provided by, not provided, but technically enforced by the government of Canada. Uh, to limit the number of students who are enrolled, who are enrolled in. Any provinces of Canada in post academic educations, uh, education institutions, in post academic institutions, sorry, um. What's, what's your opinion on that? How do you think that will affect U V A and the broader Edmonton area?
Uh, so from my knowledge, the U V A will still, I I'm pretty sure we're actually due to see an increase. Uh, in number of students I will see next year and like under this new cap. Uh, my overall view though is is that. To punish international students for a housing crisis, to be frank, that Canada was heading too long before they came here, I think is just downright absurd. I I think that international students, again, like, I I'm happy that they're providing more like realistic of what Canada is. To international students, because I also don't think it's fair to tell folks, you know, I mean, that like, Canada's a great place, you know, I mean, you'll get a job, you know, I mean, you'll find a place, it's affordable and all that. And you come here, you, eh, especially if you're in Toronto or in Edmonton, you know, I mean, and you see the rents, you see the conditions, you know, I mean. Like, I know some of my friends who are currently living in apartments that are, had been, like, one bedroom apartments that have been split into three units. And I know a lot of international students are living in sometimes like sketchy housing conditions, and again, that's not through any fault of their own, that is through government failure. So why are we punishing students? And to be frank, students are already disadvantaged, like, they're already more likely to be disadvantaged than domestic students. And are already paying an exorbitant amount of money. Why are we charging, why are we now saying that? Why are we changing the focus and putting the blame on them? And it also, again, you know, I mean, it doesn't help with Canada's problem, with Canada's like rising, uh. Similar to United States, the idea of fear of immigrants, you know, I mean, and we're seeing this like, uh, language, you know, I mean, like, uh, uh. Around like the demonizing language around immigration, you know, I mean, come to fruition, whether that be with J- Joe Biden last night at the State of the Union. Calling, uh, suggesting that elite, like, suggesting like immigrants were illegal, no human being is illegal, you know, I mean, uh, overall. I think that, that this is just shows, you know, I mean, a disturbing trend, and I think that this is slowly entering into Canadian politics. And I think that we also, we need to be very, very careful about the rhetoric that we're using to describe situations, you know, I mean. Uh, and I don't think that, 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 uh, is being applied by, uh, the government, and I think that they are indirectly targeting. No, they are directly targeting international students for something that is completely outside of their fault.
To, okay, the last thing I want to talk to you about is the tuition increases. Um, first of all, what's the, because, okay, to give some context. With the provincial budget cuts, the university's hands are tight, and as a result of that, they have to increase the tuition. Now, there are two tuition models, uh, specifically in, uh, University of Alberta. One of them is the domestic, for the domestic students, which is. Uh, regardless of what year you're enrolled at, there is a certain tuition you have to pay that might increase every year. The different, uh, the 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 the, the catch here is that there is a cap. Um, in which the university can increase the tuition, which is two percent for internationalist, uh, for for domestic students. The difference between that and the tuition model with international students is that. International students have a guaranteed tuition model, which is, in the span of the four years of your degree. You will be guaranteed a certain tuition that you have to pay, it will not increase. However, the next generation that comes, let's say, class twenty twenty five or class twenty twenty six, that one might increase. Um, and there is no cap on it. There is no reg- regu- regulation, whether it's provincial or federal on it at all, so. My concern is that we are already having the tuition hikes, we are already having massive increases. And. The 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 important point to remember here is that there is a cap in which the university can charge. And the 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 important point to remember here is that there is a cap in which the university can charge domestic students, so. What my fear is that we're gonna max out on the tuition of international students for the next couple of years at the University of Alberta. And as a result of that, we're gonna see massive, massive differences, um massive, massive impacts. On the diversity of students from the backgrounds that they attend at the university, so what do you think?
So I I think there's like three questions there, my views on like domestic cap, the international cap and how they relate. Uh so for the domestic cap, again, like I'm happy that they capped it for domestic students. I also think that they should have done the exact same thing for international students, I was disappointed that they didn't. I think that, again, I think that domestics, I mean, international students pay a ridiculous amount, I think that. It's become to the point where you're buying, you could put a nice down payment on a house, you know, I mean. And again, like, again, you know, I mean, I I love every single time uh people tell me that the university's uh money, uh budget is tight. Because it doesn't seem too tight, you know, I mean, not to afford uh Bill Fannigan's exorbitant trips around the world. I've been seeing him jet setting across the country. I would love if the gateway or if anyone could figure out how many uh, how many carbon emissions he's emitted. Uh so free suggestion there, but uh and also if they could figure out, like, I apparently, like, I saw somewhere that he spent seventy thousand dollars on meals and that and. And dining, so if you could also figure out what type of filet mignon or champagne he was sipping on. That'd be very, very, I think, uh very, very relevant for the student body, but overall, this university has the money. I I think that the university can position itself better, I think that the university can also make a case to the government. I think this is not a case just for students to make, this is not a case just for the student union to make, this is a case for the university to make as well. The university needs to stand up for its students, because I said this at General Faculty's Council, this is nothing. We are, this is a bunch of buildings with a bunch of professors and no st- without the students. What they, research can't be done, there's no learning going on, like what is happening, like peer tutoring? Uh you know, I mean, the campus, like the, like, we are everything, like we, students are in a very good position to position themselves. As we are the main driver of this campus. So again, you know, I mean, like, we need to go back to administration and lay out very clearly that, hey, we shouldn't be fighting each other. This is not a battle between the students' union and the university, this is a battle between the students' union, the university versus the government of Alberta. And the government of Canada on campus, St. John's funding and uh other initiatives as well that they have done across the country, uh so. Again, for the domestic cap, I'm, while I'm happy, I think international students also deserve to see that cap. Uh and again, I do think that that fear you mentioned there is very, very real, that international students will be subsidizing. Uh the deficiency in uh between government funding and between uh universities' operational needs. Uh you know, I mean, so i- i- it is unfortunate, I think that, again, you know, I mean, I think that we need a strong. And that's again, you know, I mean, why it's important to have the like ISA around how the students' union uh executive team. Focused on advocacy, not business, and I'll hammer you on that throughout this interview, but because like this is something they should have been focusing on. This is a case, again, you know, I mean, the international model for educate, I mean, the um. The uh the tuition model for international students, where they get a guaranteed tuition, again, is very, very nice. But I'm also saying it also needs to provide some leeway for students. For example, I'm pretty sure that if you change faculties, you know, I mean, you do end up getting uh uh throughout that four year, the guaranteed tuition. You do have to go get a brand new one, you know, I mean, if you take longer, you've become subjected not to those same fees, but to whatever the fee of the current rate is. Again, which could be, you know, I mean, like, let's be frank here, if they're increasing tuition about seven percent.
Massive difference, it will be.
That would be a hefty price.
A lot of students are actually having that problem, um especially the ones who have been uh enrolled in. At the University of Alberta before this tuition model was introduced and now are taking a fifth year or a fourth year, uh uh or a sixth year, sorry. Um so it's, it's, it's a lot of headache, um. Yeah, back to you though, you were explaining something.
Yeah, uh I remember when I started university, someone told me uh university could be the worst four years of your life or the best six years, so. Bill Fannigan, I think international students deserve to have the same opportunity to take six years. Uh without paying an exorbitant amount to fee, to fund your filet mignons and champagne across the world. So, again, you know, I mean, like, overall, like, I get that the university's hands may appear to be tied. But I'm also saying, it's also tone deaf for the university to be like, hey, folks. I'm sorry, I don't know what to do, it's just Danielle Smith. Ah, you know, I mean, but hey, in the interim, we're gonna ship on that champagne and that's, we're gonna, we're gonna maximize that dollar. I I I don't think, I don't think that's in good faith, I don't think that's a good faith argument and again, you know, I mean, and I know that. I know that there may be, like, I know that not everybody agrees with Bill Fannigan's approach. But overall, as a president of the university, I do not think he's taken enough opportunity to protect international students. These are, to be frank with him, like, his only ru- like reliable money source. The provincial government will cut funding re- repeatedly, you know, I mean, with little disregard for the university. But international students are like unfortunately forced into a guaranteed tuition model, so. Again, I I don't understand, like, I don't understand, like, uh his non-focus on international issues, you know, I mean, like the issue that matters to international students. Whether that be, and like, I'm happy to see he was, it was a marked difference in Ukraine than with the Palestinian students, however, you know, I mean, that like. All of these issues are interwoven, trust is broken, whether that be trust the students' trust in the university administration. Or the student union and with uh with. With that executive team, uh I think trust is the theme here that we're noticing, is that like. Is there a lot of trust that that students have and do students believe that things can get better?
Okay, thanks, man, thanks for doing this, I really appreciate it, uh I know this is a, this is a very busy time, especially for you. Um so this was a great interview, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely, anytime.
Thank you very much, everyone, for uh being with us at uh with the Zones of Podcast, um you can find us everywhere on Spotify. YouTube, Castbox, everywhere technically, and thanks for having us, have a nice day, bye bye.